This is our City of Southfield Regular Committee of the Whole Meeting being conducted via WebEx tonight, February 1st, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks? Banks? Can you hear me? Banks?
We can hear you.
Can anybody hear Nancy? I can't hear Nancy.
I have not heard Nancy.
Okay, Brightwell, I know she's on the line. Brightwell?
I'm here, here.
Hoskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
Morris?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Madam President, we do have a quorum, and we do have our city administrator, deputy city administrator, and other staff, and the mayor is on the line. Again, I apologize, I'm not sure what was going on with WebEx that I couldn't hear anyone.
Okay, thank you. Moving right into our agenda, the first item we have is a presentation of a joint resolution. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Council. As I need not remind anybody, this is...
I'm not on, I can't hear anything.
Ms. Banks, we can hear you.
I'm talking on the phone.
This is the, it's February 1st, this is the beginning of African American History Month, and this evening, we have a mayor and city council joint resolution to honor and celebrate this month. I'd like to read into the record, the resolution. Whereas National African American History Month, celebrated in February, had its origins in 1915, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson, historian and art author, founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History. This organization is now known as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas, originally, African American History Month was a week in February that included the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, two key figures in the history of African Americans. In 1976, the week was expanded to a month-long celebration that honors the contributions and achievements of African Americans to our nation's life and culture. And whereas, in 1986, Congress passed Public Law 99-244, which designated February as National Black or African American History Month, and President Ronald Reagan issued a proclamation calling all people of the United States to observe Black History Month with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas, respectively, every president since has issued a proclamation encouraging all Americans to recognize the importance of this month. And whereas, the theme for the 2021 African American History Month is Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity, to explore African diaspora, and the spread of black families across the United States. And whereas, in Southfield, the city will host a number of activities to observe African American History Month, and all residents are welcome to participate in the many activities planned by Parks and Recreation Department, including a movie night with Moonlight, Virtual Society of Storytellers, Take a Walk Through History, or purchase a Black History T-shirt. Additionally, the Southfield Public Library will host a reading and conversation with author and former Detroit Free Press columnist Rochelle Riley. And the city of Southfield will host a three-month display in the municipal building lobby of African American artwork depicting scenes from African American history and a number of people who advanced African American history. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Kenton Cyber, Mayor of the City of Southfield, and the city council of the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, do hereby proclaim February 21st to 28th, 2021, as African American History Month in the City of Southfield. And we ask everyone to join us in honoring the contributions and achievements of African Americans and recognizing their central role in U.S. history. I would point out that we are going to repeat this resolution next week. We wanted to get it on the agenda tonight, as there are a number of things that are happening currently. The Take a Walk Through History, if you notice the front lawn of City Hall, there are roughly 108 or 50 African Americans who made a mark in history, including some locally. And one can walk around the loop on the front lawn. And the African American History display is up in the lobby of City Hall. Unfortunately, City Hall is closed. However, the art is on loan and will be on display through April 30th. So I would like to ask the council to approve this, or at least log it for this evening, and then the formal approval will be at a regular meeting on February 8th. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'll go through the council if there's any comments or questions for the mayor for this resolution, or anything that you'd like to say. Councilwoman Banks?
I have no questions, thank you. I apologize for coming on late.
Councilman Brightwell?
Nothing, I have no questions, no comments.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Councilman Cruz?
I'd just like to say that I'm just glad that, once again, the city is stepping up to the plate, recognizing the contributions of African Americans in our country's history. And I think this is a great thing, and look forward to voting or the resolution in appropriately next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions or comments from me on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, I too am glad and look forward to this every year, as I get to learn more and more about the African American history and all the contributions that have been brought forth to help society. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Morris?
Yes, thank you. I do appreciate the beginnings of the resolution where you spoke to the origins of African American History Month, about Carter G. Woodson. But I did have a question. We've seen on the website and in other media that we are representing Black History Month, so I didn't know if there was a reason why we were calling the resolution African American History Month, or if that could be changed to Black History Month, so it could be consistent with what we've put out in the media and what's on our website?
That's the council's pleasure, that certainly can be done. We use National African American History Month, perhaps the website should be changed as this is, it started with Dr. Woodson, and that's what it was called.
Yes, it was, but as you said, that since 1976, every president has declared February as Black History Month. So, I don't know, I just, whatever we say, I just want it to be consistent.
All right, we can make that change for next Monday.
Oh, thank you, sir. Okay, those are my comments, thank you.
I'd also point out that front and center on the front lawn, facing Evergreen, is the picture of Rosa Parks. And this week is her birthday, February 4th. Rosa Parks has been called the mother of the modern civil rights movement. And we will, we're honoring her this week, as again, Thursday, February 4th, is her birthday.
Thank you, Council.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, and this will be brought back to us on the following meeting next week, on the 8th, for our final approval with the change to Black History. And I am very, I agree with all the comments that have been made, and I just want to say thank you to everyone that's participated in helping bring this together. And we have a whole month of activities, so I hope everyone takes the opportunity to see some of the things that we've put together here in the City of Southfield for Black History Month. Thank you. Is anyone else on the call have a comment or anything about this resolution? Okay, hearing none, we will go to our next item, which is the presentation and discussion regarding proposed rezoning request of Maple Ridge properties. That's PZR 20-0007. Terry Crote, I believe that's you?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, next slide, please. This is a public benefit rezoning, so the City of Southfield is being proactive on the rezoning from light industrial to industrial off of Maple Ridge Ave. There are several properties that are non-conforming. They have residential uses, business uses, light industrial and industrial uses. And there have been a number of code violation issues, compliance issues, some businesses that would like to go in there, but the zoning is not appropriate. And it is consistent with our future land use plan that was adopted by the city to rezone all the properties to industrial use. So, we bring this before you tonight for discussion purposes. This is scheduled for a public hearing on February 22nd, for your consideration. Next slide, please. As I've indicated, there are a number of non-conforming uses scattered throughout this corridor. And we have worked with the codes department and legal on trying to make some of these properties conforming, but the best and highest use for these properties is to have them rezoned industrial. Next slide. So this, the areas that are in light gray show the existing light industrial. The areas in dark gray are existing industrial uses. We want this whole area to be conforming with industrial. Next slide. This is what it would look like, consistent with the future land use plan. Next slide. And again, this is for discussion purposes only. We have had a letter of support from Rosok, who owns one of the parcels. We did get a couple of comments from some property owners, just wanting to know what we were doing, but there have been no negative comments received to date. So with that, we have to answer any questions that the council may have. Again, this is scheduled for your February 22nd public hearing.
Okay. You wanted the next slide, Terry?
Yes, that, yes, it's just, it just shows what we would be recommending. That's all. Again, no action tonight but discussion.
Okay, Council. I'll start with you, Councilman Brightwell.
Terry, how many pieces of that are actual residential?
Well, there are two, there are two properties listed as residential. However, I'm not quite positive people are living there. They're owned, they're owned as residential. I don't know if they're occupied as residential.
Okay, okay. Does that, does that create a problem?
Well, what it does is, it will make them legal non-conforming status until they come into compliance with industrial. Right now, they're not, they're illegal non-conforming situations. And as I explained to one of the owners who owns one of those resident properties, this is the highest and best use for his property to have the industrial zoning.
Okay. Okay, I don't want to push this too much further, but let me, if I went in and actually started residing in that location, and there was some hazardous material in the air, could I turn around and sue the city because there's some hazardous?
I mean, I'm going to defer to the lawyer, but we have performance standards in the city. We have light air, sound, noise, and pollution controls that are in the city right now. And if, they're currently residing there, they're already in this situation, this is likely to move towards someone purchasing the property, consolidating lots, and putting a conforming industrial use on the site. The issue has been, these are illegal or non-conforming situations. And so they're surrounded by, in my opinion, hazardous conditions already.
Right, right.
Wendell, can we go back one slide, please? Thank you.
Okay, that's it for me. I just wanted to throw that up there. It came to mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions from me on this. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me, thank you.
Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me, thank you.
And Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Terry, did you say that there were two single-family residential homes? In this proposed area?
They're existing residential homes in this area.
Okay, and we don't know if someone lives in those existing residential homes?
Well, in one case, the owners of one of the residents contacted us, but they did not indicate that they lived there, they just owned the property. The other one has been an issue with many code and other violations. So I'd have to follow up with the building department to see how they're listed, if they're vacant properties or they're listed as residential. They, they're just traditionally have been used residence in the past.
Help me to understand, please. We are proposing to rezone something where there is a single-family residential and possibly people residing there, but we don't know. Help me to understand this, please.
Well, what we're doing is, we're trying to rezone this to the highest and best use so that we, the residential and business uses will cease to exist, and that we can make conforming industrial lots out of the properties. For example, one of the residential uses that have been identified has been used for outdoor storage and junk and other things on the property in the past. So, prior, prior to finalizing this out, I will reconfirm with our building department what records they have if people are still residing in them.
I might be the Lone Ranger in this whole thing, but I, I think it's important to find out if people actually reside in the two homes that we're talking about changing from residential to industrial. And then, like, what is the main difference?
Banks, Ms. Banks, just, I, I understand, I'm trying to make the distinction. They are currently zoned light industrial, but the use may be residential. So they're not zoned for single-family residence. They're currently zoned to light industrial.
Okay, that, okay.
And there have been, so if, if there are people still residing in them, they are residing in a light industrial district zoning. And this, part of this came to light when the city attorney's office and the codes office notified us that they were, they were going for a court hearing for all these outstanding violations. And this has been a perennial problem, so we looked at the entire area that has been planned for industrial use and said, let's, let's try to make everybody conforming. And over time, these properties will become much more attractive for someone to buy up, consolidate the lots, and have a conforming industrial use there. So they are, they may have been residential in the past, but they are residential within a current light industrial district.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, just briefly, what is, what is the difference between light industrial and industrial?
Well, it's the degree of manufacturing and other types of uses. One, does, the light industrial, for a matter of fact, does not allow outdoor storage, but the industrial uses do allow for the highest manufacturing and industrial types of uses with outdoor storage.
Okay.
So if I, if you can, if you can think of Bridge Street, that is a light industrial park where you don't have intensive industrial manufacturing, you don't have outside storage. This area includes the chipping, the landscaping, contractors' yards, the transportation trailer, Rosok, which is a recycling business. Those are heavy industrial uses. We just don't use the term "heavy industrial." So those are the highest types of industrial uses permitted in our Iowa district.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions, and thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that.
Terry, along the same lines that Nancy was just speaking in, what Councilman Brightwell alluded to, we saying that we don't know if there's residents living in those two homes?
What I'm saying is, this process started quite a while ago. It's been several months to get to this point. I can't unequivocally say yes or no, so we, I will reconfirm whether somebody's living there or if this was a previously used residential property that is currently vacant or otherwise. And I don't, I, I know that during the Planning Commission public discussion, the owners of one of the residents contacted us, asked us questions, but they said that they were not residing at that home that they own. So that's why I'd like to have the ability to reconfirm whether or not somebody else is in there.
Okay, I'd like for you to do that as well, only because we need to at least speak to the residents to let them know what we're proposing, because they may decide they want to move or whatever, knowing that they could now be higher or heavier industrial usage in that area.
Through our public, our public notification process, every property owner within, within the areas being considered, and everybody within 300 feet around there have been notified.
Okay.
But I will, I will reconfirm, to the best of our knowledge, what the actual occupancy is as of the next week or two before it comes back before public hearing.
Okay, yeah, you'll let us know before it comes back. Okay, thank you. Were there any other comments or questions for Terry on this item? All right, so it'll be back to us for the public hearing.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Our next item, if we could go two slides, please, is our, the Planning Commission Annual Report from 2020. Next slide. As you recall, for the last 10 years, during my tenure, we have brought an annual report to the city council. This is required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, and it says that the Planning Commission shall make an annual written report to legislative body concerning its operations, status of planning activities, and including recommendation. Next slide. With us tonight is our current Planning Commission Chair, Jeremy Griffiths, as well as Assistant City Planner, Jeff Spence, who is our main liaison with the Planning Commission, besides myself. I'd like to, through, through the chair, recognize Mr. Griffiths to just say a few words before I make the final presentation.
Yes, of course. Hi, Jeremy, how are you tonight?
Hello, I'm good. How are you? Thanks, thanks, Terry. Thanks, everybody. Terry just asked me to say a few words. This is, I don't know if it's my eighth or ninth year on the Planning Commission. Coming up on my 21st year living in the city, which is hard to believe. And I do own a local architectural firm. We're, we're having our 10-year anniversary this year. We're located right on 10 Mile in Southfield. So it's been an interesting process being involved with Planning Commission for all these years. I started during a pretty down economy, and there was really nothing happening. And it's just been really exciting to see all these things come to life over the last few years, especially the, a lot of these master plan items that we've been implementing year after year. They're basically out, out my front window of my, my house in my neighborhood that I've been working to fix up all these years. So it's, it's great to go on a brand-new bike path and go to all these parks and now, you know, be able to go to the end of the street and finally have a bar restaurant that's, that's about ready to get going and what used to be a really bustling, you know, lunchtime crowd and office culture that we hopefully get back to very soon here, when everybody gets back to work. So it's been a very interesting few years for, for what I've seen, and it looks like we're definitely trending in a positive direction. Definitely appreciate everything Terry and Jeff and everybody else in the planning department have done to make my life easier and all the, the planning commissioners. So, thank you very much, Terry, and everybody else. If you have any.
Thanks, Jeremy. Well, I'll, we'll be available for questions from the council after the remaining presentation. Next slide, please. So last year, despite the pandemic, most of our meetings were held virtually. We had 28 Planning Commission meetings, including 13 study meetings, 10 regular meetings, and five long-range meetings. In addition, there was some crossover with the City Center Advisory Board, which we held 10 meetings. The Southfield Public Arts Commission, we held 12 meetings. And the Zoning Board of Appeals, with respect to planning items, we attended four of those board meetings. Next slide. Some of the highlights of the 2020 Planning Commission review items. Each year, we are involved by state law in shepherding the capital improvement project through the city to adoption with the council. We have been keeping our eyes on automated vehicles, master plan implementation, and non-motorized transit development. One of our bigger projects, as the council knows, is the redevelopment of Northland. Some of the tax amendments that we've been involved with is small box retail, small cell towers, and temporary outdoor seating that was done to help address businesses who were challenged by COVID. Some other zoning amendments, there was a lot of work on medical marijuana facilities last year. The updated regulations on bed and breakfast and mobile MRI units. Next slide. Some of the initiatives coming up this year are, again, we're in the process of updating the capital improvement plan. One of the other redevelopment-ready projects that we hope will be coming in soon is the Evercenter Project, large nine-acre parcel across the street from City of Southfield. I believe that everybody is more in tune and enlightened about some of our challenges here in this country with regards to diversity, equity, inclusion. And we are, we also are focused on doing a better effort in our planning with regard to DEI. We're in the beginnings of a major master plan update, our five-year update, which I'll be talking about in a minute or so. Northland redevelopment is going to be a multi-year, multi-phase project. We've had to learn to adapt to pandemic challenges, not just virtually, but trying to accommodate our, our businesses and our, our... but trying to accommodate our, our businesses and our, our way of life. Placemaking continues to be very important. And then once we get the master plan updated, having a zoning ordinance technical review and aligning the zoning ordinance with our new goals and objectives of the master plan. Next slide. So today, we launched our public input. We have eight weeks of scheduled theme topics. We are rolling out two topics per week. Experience, the public realm and placemaking and public art are part of week one. I encourage all of the council and viewing audience to participate. We try to make it as user-friendly as possible. I don't think it'll take more than 10 minutes each week. The, each week, we will go to the next set of questions, but you're always able to go back and vote on pre, pre weeks of themes. And down on the bottom is our, our webpage that'll get you to our master plan public input. What we like about it is that it's available 24/7, so it's convenient for all. We are also sent out notices to homeowners associations and condo groups. They can schedule a one-hour virtual town hall meeting with the planning department if that better suits their needs. We're trying to be as flexible as possible during COVID to try to encourage as much participation as we can. We've sent out notices to elected officials, boards and commissions, all department heads and all of our professional contacts and organizations within the city. Next slide. Training is important to both the planning department, me as your city planner, as well as the planning commission. We attended collectively 28 webinars last year, and these are some of the themes that were addressed by the American Planning Association, the Michigan Association of Planning, American Society of Landscape Architects, as well as other independent groups that deal with placemaking, trails and so forth. Next slide. All of our 28 meetings, we processed five zoning amendments, 11 special land use cases, 16 site plans and one overlay development. Now, the total development cost might be a little deceiving. This is not tax dollars or revenue, but it is potential project cost if everything gets built based on what was presented before us. The majority of, of, of this cost is related to Northland. Another large chunk is the water authorities, new water towers. But despite the pandemic, we still saw an increase in the amount of development proposed over the year prior. So that is positive news for, for Southfield. Next slide. And just very quickly, we just wanted to highlight for the viewing audience as well as council, some of the major projects. The next three slides really deal with our medical marijuana provisioning, grow and processing centers that council acted on last year. Next slide. And next slide. So these were, were six of the medical marijuana facilities that you reviewed. Next slide. We also reviewed projects as small as a gas station, convenience store, all the way up to a proposed iGolf driving range and banquet facility on 12 Mile. Next slide. Kirby's Coney Island added a drive-through in response to the pandemic. Southfield nonprofit had a rezoning from single-family to attached residential to try and encourage market rate housing in areas that are undeveloped or underutilized. Next slide. We had new proposed housing units with Maple Tree Apartments. And as Mr. Griffiths alluded to, we have New Starters Bar and Grill at Evergreen and a Civic Center Real Estate. Next slide. We had significant redevelopment in addition to the grow processing facilities on 8 Mile. We had the salt warehouse as well as new central carpet supply all take over either vacant or underutilized buildings on 8 Mile. Next slide. Many of you are aware the former federal mogul was taken over by Morelli as their North American headquarters. And I alluded to a multi-year major investment by Great Lakes Water Authority for the construction of two new water reservoirs and a pump building. Next slide. Counterdevelopment, we spent a lot of time on that. Everybody's familiar. We're very excited about Phase One breaking ground hopefully soon this year. And a project that has been there for 10 years, restored rehab on Rutland and 8 Mile. So we hope that that comes to fruition as well. Next slide. Some projects that are just recently reviewed by council, but really started back in 2020 is Yukon Building Peewee Hospitality, as well as the Southfield Industrial Park, the mixed-use redevelopment of the former mobile home park and concrete crushing site on Telegraph. Next slide. So if you could go back one slide, a window and through the chair, be Mr. Griffiths, Mr. Spence and myself would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Terry, for a nice presentation. Okay, council, I'll start with you, Mr. Hoskins.
Thank you, and thank you, Terry, for that presentation. It's really good to see all the other things that the city's been working on, the things that we've approved. It's nice to see them once again all, all together. And this is a great thing. I, I also, I did get a chance to play around with the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan stuff, and I actually like the way it looks. So I'm, I'm looking forward to other residents being able to give us their, give us their input so we can, you know, put together an even better plan going forward. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yeah, thank you, Terry. This, thank you to you and your team, this presentation, even though it just highlights some of the many projects that we had in last year. It's, it's nice to see. Also, it's nice to see that even with the current economic situation and the pandemic, that we still had a lot of things going on and people are still considering coming to Southfield to, to want to build and expand. So I'm looking forward as well to the updated master plan to see what the residents put in, what they, what they, what they see in the future of Southfield and let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Yes, thank you. Great presentation, Terry, very informative. And I too, like Councilman Mandelbaum, look forward to receiving the input from our residents in terms of master plan and look forward to seeing what the future holds for our planning department. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Excellent presentation. You've been busy in 2020. And as my colleagues have said, I look forward to the report that will be forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Terry, I echo what was previously stated. And also, I definitely appreciate your, your detail, detailing what the planning commission and your department have done. And believe it or not, I actually look forward to your, your report each year. And going through the, the report today, your PC activity, planning commission activities, I know you listed quite a few things. Would it be, would you consider, would it be relevant to put a date on those various items? Because when I was going through it, and you know, I like details. I was just going through it. The only question I had was, you know, I recall the incidents and I, I recall the various things stated, but would you be able to put a date or, you know, a date range on in the future?
Yeah, we, we could do that, but as you know, usually this is at least a three to four month process. So we, we could put an application date.
Yeah.
Put an approval date on it. But what we really wanted to show is that the majority of these items were discussed and moved forward during 2020. Some of them overlap, as you know, to 2021, where the council may, may act on it. But we'll, we'll keep that in mind for the next time.
Yeah, just give me a range, because I remember picking all of them. But I, you know, it's just a, a function of just trying to pigeonhole it and, and give me a, a date range. And one other thing, one other item, is since I've been on council, I know we did something on drones. This is probably not, it could be a part of their project here. But do you anticipate anything coming down the pipe? Would the city would have to do anything else on drones? I know the last time we looked at the state kind of overrode what we were doing, but I do feel this is something that's coming down the road.
Well, we, we continue to monitor. There are many topics and trends that we're, we're keeping an eye on. And you are correct that currently the drones are regulated by the federal aviation, but there might be some trickle-down regulations at the city level. I am not going to be one who's been involved in 35 years and thought I knew it all, and then we had 2020 hit us. I don't think anybody was anticipating a pandemic and turning our lives upside down. So I'll, I'll never say never. Also, the pace and breadth of how technology has affected our lives and has changed our lives. You know, we could do a, a short synopsis of the 100 years of planning. And really, the last 10 years has been exponentially throwing us, you know, curveballs all the time. So that is just one of many things that we got to keep our eye on towards the future and how things are delivered, how things are communicated and all, all of those issues. Having hundreds of drones delivering packages in the neighborhood and how do you regulate that versus home-based businesses? And the amount of Amazon has impacted our lives and number of deliveries at home. We're trying to stay on top of all those, those issues, but thanks for bringing that up.
Okay. Well, thank you, Terry. And I do, believe it or not, I kind of look forward to your annual report. I might be the only one in America that look forward to an annual report. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, can, can, Terry, can you just remind me to slide this up right now? This is, this is just the, the additions to the Best Western. Is that correct? The hotels back there?
Yeah, this is the, the former Holiday Inn. This is the last phase of their development. And they're still, hopefully will be coming to council in the next month when they get their legal issues addressed. But again, this was reviewed by the planning commission in 2020, hasn't been finalized yet with council. The Southfield Industrial Park, you've just acted on that last, last week. So these, these are the little bit of carryovers from, from 2020's planning commission.
Yeah, okay, very good. Well, I, I would just concur with many of my colleagues here to say that, you know, the presentation was, was excellent and informative. Hope our residents participated in the surveying. And I was just reminded about, going though, when I was looking at all of these things, you know, Barack Obama, when he was first elected, he said, you know, you make all these plans and, you know, you end up getting 20% of the things done you wanted to and 80% of what comes at you once you, you know, and, you know, moving down the road. So, you know, who would have known about the pandemic and, and other things that always come up? And I think you all have done a wonderful job at maneuvering and continuing to, to charge forward and continue making new innovative types of projects move forward and come to fruition. So thank you and your team for all you did.
Thank you, council. Okay, Terry, so this is, this will be on our consent agenda next week?
Yeah, that's correct for your formal adoption.
Okay.
Receive and file.
Okay.
And if I could, I, I, if we could just, if Mr. Griffiths had any closing comments, I don't know if he's still on.
I'm still here. No, no closing comments, though. Thank you for allowing me to be here, say a few words.
Thanks again, Madam President.
Yep. Did anyone else have any comments regarding the presentation from the planning commission?
Yes, ma'am, Ken Seiver.
Yes.
I want to thank the planning commission for all their hours of work and Terry and his team for their, their leadership. It's, it's really remarkable and very good for the city that despite the things that are thrown at us, we keep making progress. And also the, the diligence that our planning department has had for placemaking, as well as expanding our non-motorized pathway network. We're slowly turning the corner on changing Southfield from a totally auto-dominated city to one that is more pedestrian and age-friendly. So thank you again, all of you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay.
I just want to, I guess the last thing is, obviously, I got to thank the whole planning team and all of the citizen residents that volunteer all their time. I told the planning commission that we couldn't do this without them and we certainly couldn't do it without the council. And you, you have been very supportive of all of our initiatives. So I think we make a good team. Each year, we get the opportunity to review what we've done and look forward to new beginnings. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the team. Okay, our next item is the CAFER.
Good evening, Madam President. How are you?
Good evening.
This is Fiscal Services Director Austin Michaels. And tonight I am here to present the consolidated annual financial report for our fiscal year 2019-2020. The consolidated annual financial report, or CAFER, shows the city's financial position and result of operations for the year ended June 30th, 2020. Next slide, please. I do want to point out that the CAFER is available on the city's website. From the main page, if you just click on the financial reports, you should be able to get to it from there. The contents of the CAFER are produced by the city. These are our numbers. This represents our work for the year from a fiscal perspective. The auditors are then responsible for reviewing that data, that information and providing their opinion. The city received an unqualified opinion on fiscal year 2020 CAFER, which is the, the best opinion we can get, you know, when I explain this to people, I say it's like getting an A on your report card. The other thing that the auditors report on, they also issue a report on our internal controls and that has previously been provided to council. Next slide, please. This is an overview of what this presentation is going to cover. We're going to look at the general fund, the revenues and expenditures there. The general fund represents the primary or core operations of the city. And then we'll look at our pension systems and our retiree healthcare. And then we'll finish up with an overall city's financial position as of June 30th, 2020. Next slide. So starting with the general fund revenues, next slide. Duplicate. Next slide, please. This chart shows a five-year history of the general fund revenues from left to right there. Consistent with prior years, the largest share of our revenue comes from property taxes. That was about 63% in 2020, or just over $50 million. That was followed by state-sourced revenue at about 12%. And we'll look at that in a little more detail on a couple subsequent slides. And then that was followed by licenses, fines and fees at about 7%. Overall, general fund revenue was 79.3 million. Next slide. So then we look at the variances between how we actually did and what we had planned on or what we had budgeted as far as revenues. Overall, we had a favorable revenue variance. That is, we brought in 1.5 million more than we had budgeted for. And we had positive variances in interest, charges for services, and state sources that offset some of the negative variances in fines and fees, licenses and permits, and property taxes. Next slide. With property taxes being our primary source of revenue, it's important for us to look at this graph, which shows a comparison of the state equalized value or what we could be taxing at versus the taxable value, what we're actually limited at due to Headley and Proposal A. The red bars on this graph represent the gap or the difference between those two values. And that gap for 2020, which is just a little more than halfway to the right on that graph, is just under $1 billion. On the next slide, we'll look at the impact that that gap has on revenue. Next slide. So here we see the gap represented by the blue bars with the related loss to the city being the red line. In 2020, that billion dollar gap between SEV and TV resulted in roughly 28 million loss in revenue to the city. And this is a cumulative loss that we will not ever get back. Next slide. Looking more at the state sourced revenues, we have our state shared revenues. We did have a slight dip from 2019 to 2020. It was 7.2 versus just over 7. And the state is projecting that for fiscal year 21, we will be just over 6.1 million. Next slide. The gas and weight tax or our Act 51 dollars. This shows the money coming from the state for our roads. And we did have an uptick in recent years after it had been flat for more than a decade. It did peak in fiscal 18 at about $9.3 million. And for fiscal year 20, it generated $8.4 million. But we are expecting that to drop for fiscal 21 to about 7.3 million. Next slide. Now we'll look at the general fund expenditures. Next slide. Again, we have a five-year history here from left to right. And again, consistent with prior years, public safety continues to be our largest expenditure. It represents almost 73% of our general fund spending. That is followed by general government at 14%. Overall, total expenditures in the general fund were approximately $75 million for the year. Next, we'll look at the significant variances from the budget. Next slide. Overall, we had a favorable expenditure variance as well. So we had a favorable revenue variance, bringing in more revenue than we had budgeted for. And we had a favorable expense variance, spending less than we had anticipated. The overall variance of 13.6 million is primarily attributed to approximately 10 million variance in support services, which includes the budget for the Northland redevelopment project. Next, we'll look at the city's pension system. Next slide. Next slide, please. This graph shows the Southfield employees' retirement system or the SIRS plan. This is for our general employees. It does not include the fire and police system. What this shows is the plan net position or the net assets of the plan in the blue there. And then the liability, the projected future costs of the plan in the orange bars there. And then that line shows the funded status. So we had been slowly creeping up. And then this year, we kind of took a little bit of a dive here. So in 2019, our funded status for the SIRS plan was 71%. And in 2020, it's down to 63%. Now, that big drop is really attributable to COVID. And how that works is that the assets are measured at a point in time, in our case, June 30th, 2020. And at that time, we look at the market value of the investments. And the market had, you know, we had a wild year in 2020. So that funded status reflects that. We do expect this to recover as the economy recovers. And we've already seen that subsequent to June 30th. We will look at the contributions that the city makes into this plan on a subsequent slide. But next slide, we'll look at the fire and police retirement. Next slide, please. Again, same type of graphic here. We've got the plan net position or the assets in blue. And then the liability or future obligations in the orange and the funded status. Just like with the SIRS system, the fire and police system also took a hit due to the market valuations. And it's down to 63% as well. And again, we do expect that to recover just as the market recovers. Next slide, we'll look at the city contributions into these plans. So the orange portion of the bar graph here represents the contributions into the fire and police plan. And then the blue is the contributions into the SIRS plan. Now, for pension plans, there is state statute law that says that whatever our actuaries determine we need to fund or set aside for the year, we are legally required to contribute to the plan. And we do that. In 2020, our total contributions were 10.8 million, which is slightly up from 2019, which was 10.6 million. Next, we'll look at the retiree healthcare. Next slide, please. So similar to how we show it for the pensions, we have our retiree healthcare broken into the SIRS and then the fire and police. And then again, we've got the same type of assessment here where we show the plan net position in blue, the liability in orange, and then the funded status is that gray line. Now, our funded status at the end of 2020 for the SIRS plan was just over 35%. And we are expecting that to reach 40%, which is the state's threshold for an underfunded plan by the end of fiscal 21. And that is in accordance with the corrective action plan that we did submit to the state as approved by council in October of 2018. We have been making changes to our plan to obtain that funding status. Next slide, please. Now we look at the fire and police retirement system. Again, same presentation here. So we showed the plan net position, the liability, and the funded status. This funded status again did come down a bit, again attributable to the market and the response to COVID. This one is over the 40% threshold for the state's corrective action. So we are in compliance with that plan. And again, we do expect this to slightly recover as the market does. Next slide. Here we look at the contributions the city makes into these plans. Now, with the pensions, I mentioned that there is statute that says whatever your actuaries determine you need to contribute, you actually have to do that. And we do that with pensions. There is no such statute for the retiree healthcare contributions. So we are what, we are on what's called a pay as you go plan. And that means that we fund all of the healthcare benefits that are being provided by these plans. In FY 20, that amounted to $12.4 million, which is up from 10.7 in fiscal 19. And we do expect that to continue increasing. Next, we'll look at the net retiree healthcare liability. So this that we refer to as the net OPEB. The net liability is the difference between the plan net position or plan assets and the projected future costs. So our total plan net position or assets is 78.3 million. Our total expected liability, including future coverage for our retirees, is 178.9. So our total net liability is just over $100 million. And this is an increase of 4.5 million over FY 20 or FY 19. Finally, we'll look at the overall financial position of the city as a whole. Next slide, and one more time, please. So looking at the combined net position of the city, we, you know, when we looked at the revenues and expenses, we were focused on the general fund, the core operations. The governmental activities is really the whole operations of the city. And when we look at the combined net position, comparing 19 to 20, we recovered just under 22 million from the prior year, putting us back into a positive net position. Our initial negative net position in 2018, where we dipped down to that negative 162 million, that is primarily related to bringing our retiree healthcare to the balance sheet in accordance with governmental accounting standards. The recovery to a positive net position within just a two-year period is remarkable and really speaks to the sustainability of the choices that council is making and the city administrator is guiding. And next slide, that is really the high-level perspective of the CAFER. I do want to say thank you to so many people. So city councils for your overall guidance, the council finance committee for their strong involvement in the entire process, city administration for their help and support throughout every year, all the city departments who worked with us to make this CAFER happen. And this is truly collaborative effort. There is every department in the city is involved with this. And then finally, to my team, I have a fantastic team right now. And they really, they really give it their all when putting this together, especially my deputy director, Hanana Zoo. She treats this CAFER like it's her baby, and she wants everything to be absolutely perfect with it. So again, the CAFER is available on the city website. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Austin. I agree. This was an excellent presentation. Very, very good news that the CAFER was on time and the rating was just great. So remarkable presentation. I agree. I'll turn it over to council now, and we'll start with Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes, thank you, Austin. Thank you to you and your team. This was a great presentation. Again, it's nice to see that in a year, towards the end of the year, at least, that we were in the middle of a pandemic, that we were able to finish strong, have a balanced budget, contribute to reserves. It's nice to know that we are not frivolously spending money and that we are watching everything that we do in order to better the city and keep the city strong for its residents. So thank you again to you and your team for this great presentation and for making sure that this was completed on time without any hiccups. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris.
Oh, thank you. Excellent presentation again to you and your team, Austin. We did receive this overview at the last finance committee meeting. So I do have, nope, I got that question answered. Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you again for an excellent presentation, Austin, to you and your team. And also thank you to the council finance committee for going through this fine tune and administration and everyone else. And I'm glad that we were able to submit it on time. And as one of my colleagues said, considering the times that we were in, it's nice to know that we are not in the negative there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell.
Yeah, Austin, I want to thank you for making the presentation. From a finance committee standpoint, I think you've done an excellent job, Mrs. Zorn, and also the atmosphere of making sure that the finances of the city are easy to understand. I think this is the first year that we put it on the website, I believe. And that was one of the things that I know you pushed for, and I think Mrs. Zorn pushed for, and the finance committee pushed. So from a transparency standpoint, the city finances are out there for all to take a look at. So I appreciate you and your team, and I see the effort. I've seen the effort since I've been on the finance committee how much you and your team are sincerely concerned about making sure that the finances are put forth in a very easy, understandable manner. And also they are correct and accurate and timely. So thank you very much, Austin, you and your team.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz.
Yes, I won't belabor the time saying that my colleagues have pretty much covered everything. But I do have, Austin, I just wanted to ask if maybe you could speak a minute or two to explain to the public about, I mean, really, how much money we're working here. You know, we talk about, you know, your money is pretty much where your priorities are. But how much of our overall budget are we actually working with versus what is already accounted for? I just want to give people maybe just a slight percentage point and give an idea of, you know, what we have to work with to kind of get all the things that people have on their list that they want to get done.
Sure, I'm happy to address that. I think this also comes up during budget season when we talk about that. I think what you're referencing is our kind of fixed costs, you know, the costs that we're already committed to versus how much we, how much after that, yeah, how much discretionary spending is really involved here. And it varies across departments and across funds. But I would say generally for the general fund, you know, we're looking at 80 to 90% of our committed costs. So we're left with 10 to 15% discretionary.
Okay, that's, which is fairly normal for most organizations. Some actually have 80/20 rule, you know, 70/25 rule. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, so we're not off base there either. I just, you know, it's just sometimes we just need to be reminded, I think, that, you know, that because we're dealing with these numbers, that a lot of those, like you said, are already designated for something before we even start. And so to try to get everything else done that we want to takes a lot of maneuvering. And so I appreciate you and your team for doing everything you can to try to achieve the goals that the city wants to see done. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. And Councilman Hoskins.
I won't belabor this any longer. I'll just say, I'll just add that it's good to see that the city's in good financial health. And that's just a testament to you, Austin, and your team. Very, very good job on this.
Thank you. So, Austin, this will be on our consent agenda on our next meeting?
Yes, next meeting we'll be asking for a receive and file.
Okay. Did anyone else have any comments or questions for Austin before we let him go? That's on the call tonight.
Again, Ken Cyver, thank you, Austin. Since your arrival, you have made this presentation so easy to understand. It's obviously very, very complicated. And I appreciate the clarity with which all of this data is presented and the hard work that gets us to this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So thank you, Austin. All right, we'll go to our next item, which is the authorization to agree to the interlocking agreement between Oakland County and the City of Southfield.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Marceline Pruitt.
Hi.
Hi, this is our item from the city attorney's office. And as you stated, this is the interlocal agreement between Oakland County and the City of Southfield regarding the, I'm sorry, the continuing legal education requirements for the MIDC grant. And the city is already a partner with Oakland County on the continuing legal education requirement. And this amendment simply amends that agreement to go requirement. And this amendment simply amends that agreement to go on year after year until the interlocal agreement is either terminated by either party. The original agreement was set to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. And this one, as I said, will just go on in perpetuity as long as the agreement is in effect. And I'd like to take any questions?
Okay, okay, I'll open up to council. I'll start with you, Councilwoman Morris?
Yes, I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, thank you. How, in the letter, it states that these standards affect the operation of the forty-sixth District Court. They are imposed on the city as the funding unit. Can you further elaborate on that?
Yes. The court, forty-sixth District Court is funded by the City of Southfield. A portion of it is funded by the city. We are the court's funding unit. Therefore, the court doesn't enter into the agreement with the county. The city as the funding unit for the court would enter into the agreement with the county. For example, the city entered into the grant agreement with the commission, the MIDC commission instead of the court. The city entered into the interlocal agreement with the county for the arraignment-only attorneys that the county is providing for the court at Oakland County Jail. So the city has entered into several agreements on behalf of the court to allow this program to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
No questions and no comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cruz?
My, my only question was, I have no problem, I don't really have a problem with this. I'm just wondering, Marceline, why not still put a timeframe on this while leaving it in perpetuity as opposed to putting another ten years on it? Or would it matter one way or the other? Maybe that's the answer.
Well, the way it stands, as I said, the original agreement that the city entered into with the county expired December thirty-first. The program is ongoing and the city has already entered into another grant agreement with the state for the next grant year that will continue until, I believe it is September thirtieth is their fiscal year. And so the new grant that we entered into expires September thirtieth. However, these continuing legal education requirements will still need to be met for the remainder of this year. And this, the agreement will have expired, so we won't have an agreement with the county. And then the court or the city for the court will have to meet the continuing legal education requirements of the MIDC grant if we don't continue this agreement. And, and the way that the amendment is written, and I have attached it in here.
Yeah, I, I got it, yes.
Yeah, we can terminate it at any time or the, or the county can terminate it at any time.
All right, no, sounds, sounds good to me. No, no other questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
And Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, my questions have already been answered, so no questions. Thank you.
All right, great. So this will be placed on our consent agenda for next, for our next regular meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay. Did anyone else on the call have, I mean, at the meeting have a question for Marceline before we move to the next item? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, Marceline. And this will be on our consent agenda next week.
Thank you, Madam President.
All right, our next item is item number six. Discussion of the Amendment of Trowbridge. Consent agenda. I'm sorry, consent judgment. Please forgive me.
Good evening, Madam President and Council. This is Dawn from the City Attorney's Office. What we would like to discuss tonight is the Trowbridge. We have a purchaser for the property. The current owner is Iris Sacks. And as most of the council is aware, there have been consent judgments involving this particular building since December nineteen eighty-two. And then there were, I believe, three consent judgments. So what is going on now, we would like to discuss, and I have the purchasers, potential purchasers on the line, is that in the midst of going into a possible purchase and sale agreement with the property owner, Iris Sacks, the purchaser would like to do another amendment to the consent judgment. There are a lot of things that are no longer relevant. And there are just some things that need to be taken care of as quickly as possible, as council may be aware. It looks like there is a chart that I did email to you all earlier today, because I did have a brief discussion with Paul and David from Contour who are on the line. I'm going to turn it over to them in just a second. But also essentially the prior, a summary of the prior consent judgments. So what we would like to do tonight is just discuss it, get some input from council, and then get a consensus. If council is definitely in agreement with me continuing to talk with the purchaser, Contour, the potential purchaser, who has been authorized by Iris Sacks to talk with me. And once we have final language, we would just seek at the next meeting for council to approve the consent judgment. So with that, I'm not sure if David is on the line or Paul or both, but I would like them to just talk about some of the things that they would like to change as far as the consent judgments that had been entered in the past.
Shirley, this is Paul Bargnian from Contour. Thank you for the opportunity to address council this evening. As we looked at purchasing this property, we saw the record, the consent judgment and the amendments there too, dating back to the early nineteen eighties. And a lot of the provisions in there, I'm sure were put in with, with good intentions, but really aren't applicable currently. And some of them actually are probably hindering the, the success of the property. I think the dynamic has changed for this type of property. And as an example, one of the early consent judgments restricted the age to the property as fifty-eight and over. We would like to reduce that to the federal standard that's in play today of fifty-five and over. But along with that, some of the requirements in the existing consent judgment are not really germane to the typical active lifestyle of fifty-five and over communities that we see out in, in the marketplace. They're more geared, geared towards more of an assisted living type of thing. So we're looking at changing some of those provisions, but still offering amenities that perhaps we believe are more relevant to the consumer in today's marketplace. David, do you have anything you'd like to add on that? If you're with us? Doesn't sound like David is, is with us right now. But if you have any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for the introduction. We'll, we'll turn it over to council now and I will start with you, Councilwoman Banks?
Um, thank you. I have a lot of questions on this. This proposal. First of all, why are we changing a consent judgment when the property has not even been sold? What happens if we approve of this consent judgment? And then for some reason, the sale goes through?
Don, are you going to respond?
Sure, go ahead.
Well, it's my understa-, I'm sorry, this is Dawn, Councilwoman Banks. So it's my understanding that the sale of the property is still in negotiations and I think, I think this was something that wants to be, wants to be discussed among the two parties. It's not necessarily that this amendment to the consent judgment will be finalized before the sale. As a matter of fact, we did talk about that. So it's a matter of the sale, yes, is a major part of this. So it's not that this would be set in stone that the consent judge amendment to, the consent judges done before the sale is my understanding. But it is something that the purchaser wanted to discuss with the owner of the property as part of the negotiations with the potential sale of the property.
Well, and, and they, I'm sorry, thank you, Dawn, but I'm not really comfortable with that answer because the sale should be between the present owner and the, the Contour who is purchasing this property. Just a little bit of history on Trowbridge. There are about a hundred and seventy-three residents that live there. They range all the way up to a hundred and five years old. Many of these residents have lived there between nine and twenty years. We have had no plan presented to us as far as the new developers, once they purchase this property, what's going to happen to the people that live there? Also, what's going to happen to the long-term employees who work at this location to ensure the safety of the seniors and also the building? They've done an unbelievable job during this whole COVID process. This property is for the seniors. The present owner, unfortunately, has rented the top floor to young adults. And I have no idea why the city has not gone in and evicted the people. I know I personally have made a complaint to the attorney, to the city administrator, and several other people. I think it was in the late fall of two thousand and twenty. The City Attorney's Office finally sent a cease and dismiss order to the owner. So they stopped renting to the young people. However, however, no one went in to, to evict them. And I blame the city on this situation. And I'm disappointed that the city is not following up on the rules that exist on this property. So I guess, you know, my question is, what are the plans for the developer? I've heard rumor that they're going to move everyone out of the building. Do you really want to do that to someone who's a hundred and four years old, who's lived there for twenty years? I mean, this is their home. I've also heard that they wanted to remove the food program. When the Trowbridge was built, it was originally built as a facility to accommodate those seniors who wanted to live independent but did not want to have to cook. And that's why they pay the price that they pay at the Trowbridge, so they can have their meals, so they can have their rooms cleaned, so they can have their linens washed. I think I disagree with what Paul from, the gentleman Paul, said earlier about facilities like this are obsolete. You have a facility, I believe it's in Novi. It's called Fox Run. I don't know if you've ever been out there. They keep building and building and building. And what do they have out there? They have a senior complex where people rent their units. They're provided three meals a day. They're provided basically almost the same services that the people in the Trowbridge are. If they're going to keep the services, that's one thing. But it's my understanding they're not. Trowbridge is a beautiful, diverse community. Those that reside in the Trowbridge, they want a place where their meals are provided. Like I said, that's why they chose this location. Some of them could have gone across the street to McDonald Towers, but that's not what they wanted. And now we want to go and change this consent judgment. We don't have a finalized sale and we do not even know what the new owner is going to do for this property. Someone please explain to me. This does, does not make sense. And I, and I want to put on the record, and I am, as you can see, I'm very passionate about this because I care about the seniors in our city. And, and I think the people at the Trowbridge are great, but I also have a family member that lives there. And I, and I can attest to the wonderful place it is. And some of the problems that they're presently experiencing, I don't think it's the owner's fault. I think it's the City of Southfield's fault. We have not gone in. We have not done our part as far as making sure certain things were done. And then, I'm not sure. Did all of council receive a copy of the original consent judgment? Not the copy that was submitted in our agenda packet? Because if you read word for word, there were a lot of things that were omitted. And even in this material term consent judgment proposed revisions that was presented to us this evening, less than two hours before our meeting, I see some conflicts here, although I haven't had time to really study it. So I just think there's a lot of unanswered questions that we need to think about.
Think about.
And then, when, when it comes to the consent judgment, this proposed proposed purchase of park at Trowbridge letter that was sent to us, there's some items that they want to keep the provisions, but there's some items that they want to delete it. Well, I mean, some of that just doesn't even make sense to me. And then even in the original consent judgment, there's a lot of reference made to McDonald Towers. And, and I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but I don't understand why that language is in there. And if that's going to be deleted, what effect does that have on McDonald Towers? And again, if you compare word for word, the original consent judgments that were filed at Oakland County versus what we have, you're not talking apples for apples. So and then some of the list of improvements that they say that they want to do on the second page, I think ninety percent of them are already there. To me, it looks like the biggest improvements they want to make is they want to get rid of the food service program, which the residents there want. They want to get rid of the, the present housekeeping services. For some reason, they want to put in a, an outdoor heated pool. I have no idea where they're going to put that. But all these other items, they presently exist in the facility. So I just think we need more time to look this over, to review it. I'm not real pleased with what was presented to council. And personally, I think this is a lot of information to try and make a decision just at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Banks. Did you want to respond at all to anything, Dawn? Or are you waiting, you want to wait for the rest of the council?
Well, I can respond just briefly. I understand what Councilwoman Banks was saying. This was really just This was really just presented tonight to get, get council's, um, consensus about this. Mr. Sacks gave the authority, signed a document for, um, the purchaser to act on his behalf because we knew about this, um, we said, you know, we had to have the owner speak, um, and let us know, you know, we talked to the city, and then he signed authorization, uh, to the potential purchaser. So this is really a discussion item, I'm looking for the council to make a decision, but definitely Councilwoman Banks giving us this information, so with that, if you want to add something, we can go on to the next council person. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dawn, but I mean, it just doesn't make sense. To me, it sounds like we're getting in the middle of, you know, the owner and the present purchaser, and, and I don't think we should be, be doing that, and, I don't know, something just doesn't, doesn't seem right with this whole situation right now. And then Dawn, was all of council sent a copy of the original, um, consent judgments?
Well, I'll put the summary in, but I'm going to send them the original ones, 'cause I know the print, I didn't know the print was, so I said, well, let me do a summary to get started, and then, of course, we have the chart, but I will definitely send the original, uh, ones from eighty-seven. I remember probably gathering that, and I'll send that to us.
Yes, and I believe that, uh, just so councils aware, I think there's five documents. And I'd like you to take some time and compare word for word what Dawn is gonna send you, which, Dawn, I'm disappointed that all of council does not have it. Because if you look at your summary and compare it to the consent judgment, especially the third one, there's a lot of things that are missing.
Okay, I apologize, I'll get that.
Madam President?
Uh, yes, Councilman Cruz.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if we could table this, uh, for a later meeting, if it's not of anything, this, uh, urgent, I think Mrs. Banks, just by herself, just brought up enough points for us to see that, that we're, I don't think we are ready to, uh, take this on right now. So, uh, I'd like to pro- postpone it to a date uncertain to give the council at least enough time to review everything.
Sure, sure. Is that the general consensus from the rest of the council? I, I agree with what, uh, Councilman, uh, Cruz is saying, we need more time to review just based on what we've heard from Councilwoman Banks, without going through the rest of the council, getting your questions, um. If we have the additional documentation, and we can bring this back, uh, at a date uncertain for further discussion.
Well, Madam Chair?
Yes, uh, Councilman Brightwell.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement too, but I wanna make sure that, uh, we addressed the saving points Mrs. Banks brought up. Uh, she brought some very good points, and I would like to, I like for the significant points brought up to be addressed by whatever part is there, I don't wanna meet just to meet, but we will address the saving points. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm gonna say it as well, oh, I'm sorry?
I was gonna say, I think that, um, the, um, attorney received all of the points or everything that was in question, and I believe that she's going to have answers for all of the major points that, uh, Councilwoman Banks brought up. And what I, what I'll do is just go around quickly to all the council members, and seems like, and you can say you agree or disagree, or state your point. So that we can move this on for tonight. Um, so, Councilman Brightwell, you said you're in favor?
Yes.
Of postponing?
Yeah, so we can discuss the saving points Mrs. Banks brought up, yeah.
Okay, and Councilman Cruz, you're in favor of postponing it?
Yes, and I'd just like to also say, I, but not just Ms. Banks' points, but any one of us who had questions or concerns, to send those to Attorney King, so that all the saving points will be, uh, answered by the next time that we talk about them.
Okay, that makes sense. Would, uh, yeah, we could just take and, and send all of our questions regarding this item to our attorney for, for, for answers, and then when we have this on the agenda, she'll have answers for all of our questions, and we should have a more, uh, productive meeting. But we'll just do that. Okay?
Yep.
All right, all right. Thank you, everyone. All right. Our next item will be the, uh, presentat- oh, this item, we have to pull item number seven, I do believe. Uh, I'm sorry, it's not, it's.
President, we updated it on the PowerPoint, so on your agenda, item number seven was a presentation by code enforcement, which, uh, has to be postponed, so the new number seven item, uh, council will discuss, that's the authorization to purchase the new gas-powered golf carts for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay, okay, but for those of us who had the old agenda, that item was pulled, I'm sorry, I just needed to, to state that. Okay, the next item that we have is authorization to purchase new gas-powered golf carts carts for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Yes, good evening, Council President Taylor, uh, the council and mayor, and the rest of the Southfield team. Uh, this is Terry Fields, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm joined by Chris Riley, who's our facility supervisor for the Evergreen Golf Course. Um, we're here tonight to, uh, ask for authorization to purchase, uh, new gas-powered golf carts for our department. Um, just took a couple highlights, uh, from last year's golf season at Evergreen. Uh, a few notes, uh, last year we had three thousand more rounds of golf, uh, despite being closed for, uh, the first six weeks, as we all know, it was not a normal twenty-twenty year. Um, we had additional revenue last year of an increase of sixty thousand dollars. Um, we did increase our cart fee last year, uh, because of the sanitizing, uh, and the additional staff and product. Um, and we also had a flat green fee, uh, of twelve dollars, so even with those challenges, um, that were faced, uh, we still had a, a very good year. Um, we're looking forward to another successful season. Uh, and in that vein, uh, updating our equipment in a timely fashion, uh, is a goal for us going forward. So I will turn it over to Mr. Riley, uh, who will, uh, present the item. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Just, uh, I wanna start with, uh, a little background on the carts that we currently have. We, uh, that are in need of, uh, are in dire need of replacement, some of them. We currently have two fleets of golf carts, uh, that we, we have green club cars, and we have white Yamaha carts. The green club cars are eight seasons old and are really showing signs of wear and tear. Uh, the starters, tires, batteries are in, uh, need of constant repair and replacement. Um, carts are breaking down on the course, which obviously is not a good customer service, um, aspect for, for us to, to, to show. Um, so we go out and replace the cart for the customer, but it's time-consuming and it interrupts their day. So, um, we wanna make sure that that situation gets improved. The white Yamaha golf carts have been in season for five years. First three seasons were over at Beachwoods, the last two seasons they've been over here. Um, but we've noticed they have a tendency to be top-heavy and tip over. Um, so from a safety standpoint, we feel those are in need of replacement as well. So we are looking to replace forty-six of the golf carts, and then trade those in to purchase thirty-two new, uh, gas-powered golf carts. Yeah, we've worked with purchasing, and, um, we are gonna be taking that out of our operating budget. Account number two zero eight five five three five three zero one two seven four zero zero. And we are recommending, the council authorizes the purchase of the golf carts from Midwest Golf. We received two, uh, cooperative contract bids, um, one from Easy Go, one from Club Car. The difference in the two, uh, prices is, is roughly about three hundred dollars. But, um, the, uh, added value of going with Club Car is they will be including some spare tires, which is about a seventeen-hundred dollar value. And then, they also have a storefront in Commerce Township, which will help us in terms of service.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions?
Yes, I'm gonna turn it over to council now, so that we can get any questions answered, asked, okay? Okay, I'll start with you, Councilman Brightwell.
Um, I'm supportive of this, I sent Terry a, um, a list of questions earlier today, and she got back to me with answers, so I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with this particular, um, purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, uh, part of my questioning, uh, was already answered, was, um, since Beachwood had been closed, what were we doing with those other carts? So I got, gotten that taken care of. I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it, since we're down to this, to the one nine hole course. Uh, we need to make, we need to make it the best course we can do, we can make it, and so, um, we don't, certainly don't need any hazards out there, if they're tipping over or something of that nature, uh, that's not a good thing by any means. So, uh, I think, uh, council should, should, um, support this wholeheartedly. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No, I, I'm, I'm definitely in support of this, uh, I don't have any, uh, questions really on this one.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No, I have no questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me, I support this purchase, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, two questions, please. Um, what is usually the longevity, give or take, of a golf cart?
Uh, uh, the commercial-grade golf cart, they recommend being traded in four to five years, but, um, you know, doing some research, it's about six to seven years is, is the typical lifespan. And with the carts that we have that are eight seasons old, around year seven was when they were, um, in need of pretty constant repair, so, so that seems to be right in line with what we noticed as well.
Um, thank you, and then my, um, my final question, have we looked at electric golf carts? I mean, you know, if you read in the newspapers, you know, they're talking about electric cars, they're around the corner, everything's going electric, if you, you know, a lot of golf courses around here are turning their golf carts to electric carts. So I was just wondering, did we even look at electric golf carts, um, you know, and, you know, what is the cost difference?
We, we considered electric carts, there are, there are some pluses and minuses to, to having those. The, the first negative situation would be the infrastructure it takes to, to, uh, implement putting guests, or uh, electric power carts out on the course, you need to have a lot of charging stations in the enclosed area to do that. We're very, we have very limited capacity at Evergreen, but we are gonna look into that, um, for the future, for sure. Um, there is definitely a transition going to electric. Um, they, they have some, um, you know, at around the six or seven-year mark, you have to replace the batteries, which can, you know, range from eight hundred to thirteen hundred dollars. And then, the, uh, you know, the trade-in value lowers on those. But in terms of, uh, the environment and things like that, it's definitely worthwhile looking into electric carts in the future.
And while I'm in favor of this item, I just think, you know, the next time we consider purchasing golf carts, we really should, you know, actually plan now for the future and look at the electric carts, and, you know, what is the cost gonna be for the charging stations, or, I mean, I, I've seen different kinds that were out there while I was golfing, and, um, I, I think we can accommodate it at, um, you know, Evergreen in the future. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, um. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, no, I have, I, I have, I sent Terry a list of questions, I think they, they came up, and I think they prepared it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I had called you already, I'm sorry. I just wanted to hear you say that again.
That's fine, that's fine, I'm, 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 I'm here to serve in any capacity.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, um, hearing that, you'll move this forward to our, uh, consent agenda for next week?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, did anyone else have any comments or questions for Terry before we move to the next item? Okay, hearing none. Our next item is, uh, San Marino Subdivision Wellhead Land Transfer of Ownership. I believe this is you, Larry Searle?
Hi, Council President, I believe Fred was taking the lead on this, um, Fred, if that's not the case, let me know.
Fred, are you on the line? Okay, Larry, you wanna go ahead and get started?
Yes, ma'am, um, the San Marino Sub, um, there was city water main put in in the late nineties, and I do apologize not having the item right in front of me. Um, but they have their own private system that has a, a wellhouse on the other side of Twelve Mile. A couple years back, they missed tax, uh, paying their taxes, three years. Um, the, they went into tax foreclosure, the city exercised their right of first refusal, um, county made a mistake and sold it privately after that. Um, I know there was a little issue in court over who was gonna get it, ultimately, the city owns the parcel. Um, one of the big concerns in turning that over, or, you know, once the city was made whole, was that the system didn't have a licensed operator. Um, they have recently made that happen. Um, they hired a private company to come out and be their operator in charge, so they would have a, uh, properly operated system with that property going over. Um, I know in part of the, um, letter Fred wrote, uh, we're looking at also, uh, getting a grant through Eagle, um, which would pay for the residents to hook into the city main, and, uh, well itself would then be used either for irrigation, or abandoned, or, you know, uh, what, I guess, really whatever they decide from there, but it would not be for, um, potable water anymore. Um, I know there's some more questions about, um, zoning and everything. I know Fred was with, um, uh, Mike Ratcliffe to discuss that. And, um, that's really what we're looking at right now, um, putting it out for, for council to understand. San Marino has a desire to, to own their well and well property, and they've met what the city's concerns were, um, prior to entertaining turning it over to them.
Okay, well, I'll turn this over to council now, we can ask questions. Um, we'll start with you, Councilman Cruz.
Yes, um, this is one thing that, uh, we were talking about, I had ta- at least I had talked about with one or two members, just real quick in terms of turning this over, if there was something to happen, and I, I don't mean to steal their thunder. I think it was Mr. Brightwell who, uh, mentioned this to me, but we had the same idea. What, um, you know, uh, if something toxic were to happen there or whatnot, even though they may have ownership and so forth, would we, will we be liable, or would be looked at as liable?
Councilman Cruz, the, um, that was the reason that it was so imperative that they get it at a licensed operator. Ultimately, that responsibility is, the person that's the operator in charge of the system is ultimately responsible to answer for any water quality issues, or any, um, you know, harmful effects or, um, contaminated water.
Okay, and, and they've met all of that, as you stated.
Yes, and they've provided the documentation.
Got you. All right, that's, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this one, thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no questions, I, I definitely think that they should own their, uh, their own well, as long as it's being operated appropriately. So no questions. Thanks.
Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
If, if we turn it over to them, will there be an agreement as to who's responsible for who? I mean, I agree with what Councilman Cruz stated and, you know, I had the same concerns. I think I'm still a little confused on this item.
Councilwoman Banks, I think the confusing part is there's twin systems running through San Marino subdivision. One is the city water main and one is the private system. And that would, that's the, those, those two systems do not interconnect. So what comes out of the ground at San Marino for the private system never touches the treated water that we have in our city lines.
But are all the residents in the San Marino subdivision finally connected to city? Because at one point, they were all on well.
Correct. Currently, right now, there are seventeen residents hooked to city water. Last year, this year alone, six hooked up. I think that's just because of the reliability issues. And there, there, I've spent a lot of time with the association, providing them information. And they're in the process of trying to get their resident support to just switch over to the city supply. And we're in a pretty unique, we have a pretty unique opportunity. As this is the first time we've ever had funds available from the state. It's called a C2R2. I don't know exactly the acronym, but it basically is a consolidation grant. And taking these smaller systems out really is kind of a goal of Eagle right now. Smaller systems don't get, they don't, they're not as efficient to run. And there's certainly a lot more risk, you know? A lot of times it's a neighbor that has the license and once they move or whatever. But if it goes through and we hear it's going to score fairly high, there'll be a zero out of pocket to the residents to hook up.
Okay, but Larry, help, help refresh my memory. I thought years ago, they did not want to hook up to the city lines. And they came out in groves, you know, against it. They wanted to stay with their, with their well system. Is that still the case?
I, that is not, that is not the, that, well, we'll know because we're going to have, they're going to have some meetings. But that's not as big an issue now, Councilwoman Banks, because they have almost as many water main breaks a year as the whole city does. The system has aged past being reliable.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I, I hope they cooperate. So.
I hope they take advantage of the opportunity.
Absolutely, but I just, and I don't know, maybe the, the people that were really opposed to it no longer live there. I know there's been a lot of changeover in the San Marino subdivision area, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I've been kind of intimately involved with San Marino in this issue for almost two years now. And the impetus for my getting involved was the number of breaks, as Larry just mentioned, that they've had there in their well system. And that's costly. And we looked at getting a private contractor to come in. And obviously, they contacted me to work through the city. But I'm all for turning this well back over to San Marino. But I would like for the city to be made whole because we have expended money because, you know, taking it out of tax foreclosure. But I'm also want to make sure that there's a full education of all the citizens about the benefits of tapping into the city system. So everybody get clearly understand the benefits of tapping into that system. I, I know that grant is going forward and the grant itself will have some limitations. But, but we're not at that point now. But if the grant is a hundred percent approved, there are limitations with respect to how they can, what they can do with that well water. So I think we need to just make sure, and I think Larry and Fred, and I'm aware of their, the homeowners association setting up meetings for an education process for their residents. And if the grant is not afforded, is not approved, but they need, need to be made aware of what they can and what they can and cannot do with that well water. So Larry, I'm, I'm, my point is that I do want them to own their well. But at this particular stage, can we rely on the grant being approved? And if that grant is approved, is my understanding, they cannot use that well. Is that correct?
A hundred percent sure that they can't use that well for potable water. They can't drink it. I do believe, I do believe they could use it for irrigation. Just, I don't think that's going to be very cost effective and I don't think they know that yet. And we, again, we are scheduling, working with the association to schedule their meeting at the inner circle so that we can socially distance and get their neighborhood, in front of their neighborhood association.
Okay, and I am aware that trying to get the meeting over there at your shop. So that's where I am. I would like for them to obviously own it if they can. But obviously to, to, if nothing else, just make sure all the citizens are made aware of what the ramifications are. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I think we all can agree with that, Councilman Brightwell. Thank you for bringing that up and bringing it to our attention. Okay, Larry, do we need, this will be on our consent agenda for next week?
Madam President? This is Administrator Zorn. I apologize. I've been listening and I had some technical difficulties. The action that will be recommended to council is that the property be transferred for back taxes on the, on the property, providing that they have a, that they continue to comply with state laws. And that in the event that, that the wall, that the prop, that the well be restricted for their residential use only. So that would be a deed restriction, that it's for their residential use only. Anything else would have to come back to city council for approval. And for the back taxes that weren't paid for the three years prior to seventeen and the three years forward. That is a very minor number.
Okay.
Okay, so that'll be the actual action. I did speak to an environmental attorney late this afternoon regarding some drilling and that. Really would like to get the, the city out of the ownership of this well. It was theirs before. It was a simple, I believe, you know, as Larry made reference, the individual was responding, it was a simple oversight by the neighborhood association. So again, it'll be that they, they're in compliance for state law and that the well is used for the residential purposes for that subdivision only.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else on the call have any comments for this particular topic? Okay, hearing none, that'll be on our agenda next week, a consent agenda next week. That was the last item that we had on our agenda for tonight. Now we're going into communications.
Madam President, I will unmute the individuals in our attendee list to see if anyone wants to speak during the communication portion.
Thank you.
And they've been unmuted.
So if there's anyone on the call that would like to speak, this is the communications portion. Please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes to, to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 48037. Madam President, tonight I wish to talk about Section 11.18. 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter. Section 11.18 is entitled Amendment, which describes how this council may, if it wishes, amend the Southfield City Charter in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy two-step Michigan state law, known as the Michigan Home Rule Act of 1909. Thus making Section 11.18 null and void. 11.18 became null and void way back in 1958, when the Southfield founding fathers attempted to adapt the Michigan Home Rule Act into the initial Southfield City Charter. That's when the nine-member City Charter Commission mistakenly deleted the second step in a two-step process. State law mandates yesterday and today that it takes two, two mandatory steps to amend the Southfield City Charter. State mandatory step number one, the Southfield City Council, that's you folks, must first of all pass a proposed charter amendment. And then the next step, state mandatory step number two, the Southfield voters, that's us folks, must pass by ballot election council's proposed charter amendment. Unfortunately, 11.18 totally deletes state mandatory step number two, the ballot election. In a word, after sixty-three years, it is about time that you folks here on this city council wake up and do yourselves a felicitous favor and fix Section 11.18. If not you, then who? Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Yes, hi.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Let me know when you are ready for me to start.
I'm ready now. Go right ahead.
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 48037-0155. My telephone number is 2483460439. We had a problem in the city of Southfield many years ago and it seemed to have tapered down, but it's coming back up and out. And that is seeing shopping carts all over Twelve Mile Road, Southfield Road, certain parts of Evergreen, near the shopping center and the grocery store. And what can we do to stop people or to impress upon people that the shopping carts are for the people that shop at the store? So my husband and I was thinking that maybe we could start something called Southfield Operation Shopping Cart. And maybe I'm willing to donate and maybe it could be a partnership with the city to donate. And we can check with some other nonprofit agencies to go and got, go and buy these shopping carts for the people that qualify, mainly the seniors and the people that don't have cars. We have got to help these people to get their grocery home because you can't just go and every day pick up one or two or three items from the grocery store. And they're asking you to stay at home with the pandemic. People want to be able to go to the grocery store and buy something or buy things that would maybe last them one to three months. So I want to know if the city would be motivated to do something like that. And I would be willing to put my money where my mouth is and make a nice contribution to buy shopping carts to people that really need them and that would qualify for them. The other question I wanted to ask you, and people ask me this a lot when I'm at the post office, what days are they allowed to put furniture items outside? I've had a couple of residents say that they put out one with a water tank and I think something like a chair. And the garbage people did not pick it up. So can someone speak to what days you're supposed to put out those home items that you are tossing out? Happy Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, New Year to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the line?
Madam President, there does not appear to be anyone else on the line.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone that would, could give a quick answer for the pickup of furniture or any bulk items? Is there certain days or how that process works for the city of Southfield real quick?
Council President, this is Larry Searls with Public Works.
Yes, hi Larry.
I believe our trash policy, without looking at it in front of me, gives you one appliance per pickup cycle. And the furniture, if you're doing a move out, you can get picked up on a, you just make a call and schedule it.
Thank you.
And all those are on our city website, all the trash guidelines, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, council, is there anything else for, for us tonight? Any final comments from anyone? All right, hearing none.
Council President?
Oh, yes.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes, hi.
I wanted to know if it's possible to put on the city's website an easy place to find and understand all the different events that are going on this month. I know, you know, Parks and Rec is doing a lot of things and, but if we, there's a way that we can maybe centralize all that information, maybe on the city's homepage as a feature or something like that. I think it may be beneficial to people who are looking for information.
Okay.
Sense.
Is that something that's possible? I'll defer to Fred. He's our senior administrator.
Madam, Madam President, we can make, work towards that goal. Just a point of clarification, are you talking in general or that we, all of the Black Awareness Month activities be grouped in one location?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking right now to have all of the, the African-American Black History Month things, the events and programs all in one location for, you know, to, so people are not searching all over the place to find everything.
And Councilman Mandelbaum is hitting on a challenge. You know, for example, the library does maintain its own website. But we will work towards an integration of events, library, Parks and Rec, city.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Morris, did I hear you as well?
Yes, Madam President, thank you so much. With today being the first day of Black History Month, I just wanted to encourage everyone to take a few moments each day to learn something new about black life, culture, and history. I was reading about Ella Baker over the weekend and I was just in awe of, of her leadership and, and her contributions. Ms. Baker was a civil and human rights activist whose behind-the-scenes work helped organize and activate the work of the NAACP, the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, and the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee. Ella Baker is considered the most influential woman of the civil rights movement. So I just wanted to share that because black history is American history. And we want to recognize significant contributions to our society by those that came before us. Also, I just want to encourage everyone to schedule your appointment to get vaccinated. I know many of our council members spoke about that last week, but vaccines save lives. I'm getting my first dose of the vaccine this Wednesday, so I'm very excited about that. We've been starting to hear that people who have been vaccinated can also Um, we've been starting to hear, um, that people who have been vaccinated can also test positive for COVID-19. But just know that vaccines prevent illness. They do not prevent infection. So it is possible for you to be vaccinated, but still test positive. But one thing that we do know is that we have not heard of anyone dying from the vaccine. Uh, we do know that over four hundred and forty thousand people have died of the virus. So please, please, um, make an appointment to get a vaccination. Those are my comments this evening. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. No, no problem. Thank you. Uh, anyone else on council have any other comments they'd like to make?
Yes, um, Councilwoman Banks?
Yes, hi.
Hi. Um, we, we, um, council received two communications this past week. And, um, I, I forwarded them onto administration and I'm not sure if anyone has responded to them. And if, if someone could please respond to them or, um, you know, explain what's going on, it would be appreciated. And if you need the items forwarded on, again, um, please let me know. Cause I don't know how to respond back to these people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else? All right. Uh, anyone else on the call have anything they'd like to add to tonight's meeting? All right. Well, thank you everyone for joining us for our committee of the whole meeting tonight via WebEx. And we will speak to each of you next week. Thank you.